All right, it's called order town council meeting, public hearing, regular meeting, November 16th, 2023, 6:30 at the Cape Charles Civic Center. Can I have a call to order, please?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
The call is present.
My apologies.
Holloway present.
Beuta present.
All right, let it be now. We've established a quorum, and if we could all rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number three, public hearing, zoning map amendments from general business, light industrial and harbor, to harbor only, tax parcel number 90-a-1a6.
In your packet you have both the planning commission staff report that was provided from their public hearing, as well as the town council staff report, which provided at for last month's agenda packet, which you did not have a quorum for, and I've also provided a supplemental report in tonight's packet to help address some questions that were raised about how this lot was originally created, and I think I've been able to walk you through that issue at this point in time. So the applicant is here, he is seeking to rezone this, it is split zoned right now, and so he is seeking to bring it all under one zoning designation. He has indicated through the planning commission, the proposed use should be work-live units. He has since the planning commission hearing has provided a conceptual plan from Moke, sorry, I forgot the full business name, which is a golf cart rental company, a conceptual plan for that being located on that property. So unless you have any particular questions with the staff reports right now, I will stop and allow the public hearing to continue.
Okay.
No one has signed up to speak in person, but I did get an email from Councilman Grossman asking that his comments be read into the public hearing.
Did you bring the mic over to you?
Asking that his comments be read in during the public hearing. Dear Mayor, fellow council members and town manager, I'm attending the Governor's Housing Conference. However, I would like to express my comments on this zoning request. First, I would like to thank our zoning administrator for the further research performed surrounding the history of these properties. It is not an easy thing to follow. This revised and corrected information would have been beneficial during our planning commission public hearing and regular meetings on this same subject. I have two comments or questions. One, in the staff report, the lot in question, parcel 90-a-1a6, was first presented as 79.85 feet in width, but needed to be 100 feet per the zoning administrator. The 100-feet requirement is associated with GBI H1 zoning requirements, while harbor has an 80-foot requirement. Why was 100 feet pushed and not harbor's 80-foot width? Two, our recently adopted comprehensive plan includes a future land use map that clearly depicts this subject area to be Harbor District Industrial, which coincides with GBI H1 designation. The map also clearly delineates the intended Harbor District area. In addition, we expect that tax parcel 90-13-a that was sold to the Department of Conservation and Recreation to eventually be rezoned in accordance with the future land use map as conservation slash open space. I am of the opinion that we should stick with our future land use map designations as presented in our comprehensive plan for this area. A more appropriate location for the suggested enterprise is within our Harbor District or immediately adjacent to it through rezoning. Having a sliver of Harbor District sandwiched between eventual conservation, open space and industrial and away from the actual Harbor District seems inappropriate to me. Thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Motion to close the hearing. I get a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? And this is just the...
Right, it's just the hearing. Declare the hearing closed and we move on.
Okay, thank you. So we got the recognition of visitors, presentation, and employee celebrating a significant anniversary. Certificate of appreciation, this certificate is awarded to Kathy Kathleen Prom in recognition of 10 years of service to the Municipal Corporation of Cape Charles, November 25th, 2013 to November 25th, 2023.
So Mr. Mayor, Kathy's been a real treasure to have, and she's also retiring. She's retiring in December. So she did want me to convey that to say that she appreciates the recognition and that she's been honored to serve this community and she's been very grateful for the opportunity.
Well, congratulations. So, public comments, we have no one?
For the regular public comments, we do have several signed up.
Okay.
First one is Laura Weigand.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Weigand. I'm a full-time resident and homeowner of 632 Madison Avenue. First of all, I want to thank all the town council, especially the mayor and staff for the wonderful event, the Dock Dogs. It was really fun. We had a blast.
Thank you.
I know that our issue got pulled off of this agenda. I just wanted to make a couple of comments and hope to open some discussion. And after receiving Mr. Hosey's last email, it seems that Madison Avenue parking issue is unfortunately taking a turn to become very one-sided and biased toward the Wendell's once and not the residents. It's disturbing that in this email, he considered parking on the street in a residential zone in front of their own house, a harassment of business. Taking away residential parking spaces in front of their own homes is a contradiction to the previous proposal that each residential property would get a 20-foot, secure a 20-foot parking space if you have a driveway and 40-foot two parking spaces if you did not. So my question is, why is the 600 block of Madison any different than that? I also want to address his words of harassing the business on the upkeep of property. I feel this might refer to the property located next to us at 636 Madison, between the Wendell's warehouse and our home. As far as I know, there's a town ordinance mandated repair or demolition by neglect. We would just like them held to the same accountable standards that any other resident and citizen and homeowner is in the city and the town. So hopefully that we can either address them fixing up the roof with the holes or selling off the property. And I also believe that this is a historic home that deserves new life because it was, from what I understand, an African-American tailor business there that ran in the back house of that property and should be hopefully part of the historic tour someday. There's a new norm for Cape Charles. More residents are moving here, more lots are being developed. Businesses, especially those in residential areas, must make progressive maneuvers to continue business as normal. I know since we've had to unload many pallets by hand, and our business is located in commercial, it's just the inconveniences that we have to do at times. And we have, as residents, done nothing, nor would we ever interfere with business as usual. Just usuals can change. So I researched some nearby ordinances, Suffolk being one of them, and all I'm requesting is to ask to please have another meeting, an open meeting with all parties involved, and a couple of impartial council members to mediate so we can discuss these ordinances that I discovered. Thank you.
Thank you.
LD Davis.
LD Davis, 112 Peach Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. John, I took a walkabout tonight, and I walked over to the public lot south of Mason Avenue. It's a wonderful parking lot, gravel lot, markers, not a light fixture to be found in 70 spaces. Then I walked from Strawberry north on Mason to Peach. 28 spaces, four light fixtures. To my knowledge, Cape Charles Police have not reported people getting lost on Mason, not finding their cars, not being able to get into their cars. Hasn't been a problem. Now, the Phase 3 trail between Mason and Peach is going to be 27 spaces with 10 lights. It is a mixed-use block, commercial and residential. I would ask you, as you take on the Phase 3 trail piece of business tonight, that you let common sense prevail and think about reducing the number of lights that you was in the proposal by staff. As it stands now, staff says that there needs to be 10 light fixtures on a block that is not as bit long as Mason, from Peach to Strawberry. This is a quality-of-life issue for those of us who live in the area. I won't be able to see the stars at night from my house. This is not a win. A win is you get to your car safely, you get in your car and you drive away. If people can do that on Mason and they can do it on the public lot, I think perhaps we need to rethink and go back and find a better mousetrap for Phase 3 trail. Thank you.
LD Davis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, clerk, manager, I am Diane Davis, resident Cape Charles. And at this point, I'm just asking for some help or suggestions. I have been to you all, you all, I have actually been to you, about sidewalks. And I said I wasn't coming back, but I am back. But now I would like for you to give me some suggestions. Seth, at this point, you don't seem to have a priority with sidewalks where we have houses and no sidewalk, because every time I see it, it's gone to the bottom of the list. Can you tell me someone that I can go to who maybe could help us get some sidewalks? If you can come up with that, I would really appreciate it, because I see right now it's not a priority for the town. So somebody that's not in this town maybe could give me some suggestions. If you know anybody, please let me know. And the last thing, I happen to be looking at the agenda, and I know it was postponed, but about restrictions on Madison Avenue. How can we have restrictions on Madison Avenue in this residential area? So hopefully, whatever you think about it doesn't make sense. It shouldn't be on here. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's everybody that has signed up, but I do have one that was emailed from Julie Jones from 538 Monroe Avenue. To Cape Charles Town Council, Cape Charles Planning Commission and Cape Charles Town Manager, my name is Julie Jones, and my husband and I live full-time in the Historic District of 538 Monroe Avenue. I strongly support the need for the town of Cape Charles to have regulations to govern and limit the number of short-term rentals in the Historic District of Cape Charles, and greatly appreciate all of the work done by the Short-Term Rental Committee that led to these recommendations. When we purchased our home in 2015, there was great diversity among the people who lived in our block. There were watermen, young families, state troopers and landscapers, people who rented long-term and who benefited from the availability of workforce housing. This all began to change in the fall of 2019, when one of the homes in our block sold and was converted to a short-term rental. Over time, the four duplexes in our block representing eight residences converted to short-term rentals as well as two other single-family homes. There are currently 29 residences, counting duplexes as two residences, in our block of Monroe Avenue. Of these, at least 11 are short-term rentals. There are three houses in our block that recently sold, and word on the street is that they are destined to become SDRs as well. That will mean 14 out of 29 residences or nearly 50% of the houses on our block will be rented out as SDRs. Kind of loses that small-town charm, community feel of knowing your neighbors that we all value and love. I believe that the purpose in establishing the committee to study this issue, which is certainly not unique to Cape Charles, was the recognition that we are a very small town with limited resources, and it is to the benefit of everyone who loves this town if a cap could be put on the number of SDRs in the Historic District. I understand that one recommendation, as it currently is proposed, would allow additional SDRs to be added up until January 1, 2025. How would that do anything to manage, reduce, control the number of SDRs in the Historic District? It seems to me that by giving people more than a year to convert a home that is currently single-family to an SDR will only lead to a rush to increase the number of SDRs in the Historic District. Certainly, the three recently sold homes in our block would fall into that category. Instead, would you consider closing the door on new SDR requests on January 1, 2024, and give people until January 1, 2025 to fully act on that request? Also, if houses that are currently SDRs are sold and are allowed to be rolled over as SDRs by the new owners, that does not seem fair to anyone who might want to get on a list to have their house become an SDR. Once a house is sold, the new owner should have to go to the bottom of the list and wait as opportunities open up, as SDRs are either sold or their owners discontinue using them as SDRs. Does this, doing this might actually mean that houses are once again available for long-term rental as people wait their turn on the SDR list? Finally, there have been many different percentages of SDRs in the Historic District disseminated, some as low as 15%. If that percentage is true, then for our block to be currently at nearly 38%, someone must have none of these SDRs in their block. Is that fair?
Fair. Stop. Sorry.
Stop your talking.
That is it. All right, consent agenda. Can I have approval of the agenda format, approval of minutes, and approval of August 31st, 2023, and September 30th, financial reports?
Second.
Any...
Do we need to act on the agenda? Is it just deleted, struck out? We don't need to...
No, we posted it in time and in the correct form.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. And unfinished business, we have none, and getting into new business. Parking restriction on portion of Madison Avenue postponed. B, zoning map amendments from general business, light industrial, GB1, H-1 and Harbor, to harbor only, tax parcel number 90-a-1a6.
So as I previously indicated during the public hearing, we have this application to rezone a split-zone parcel, put it all under one zoning classification. It is a total of 1.799 acres. I do want to address at least one of the comments that was submitted by...
Councilman.
Thank you, he's a councilman over here, sorry. Councilman Grossman.
How soon we forget poor Paul.
He's a commissioner in my world, sorry. Why I require the property owner to bring it into compliance with 100-foot road frontage, because it is split zoning currently today, and I have to zone and apply all of our zoning standards to the largest amount required, which in this case, under GBI H1, is 100-foot road frontage. And I know harbor is a lesser road frontage, but because there's a portion of it that is currently GBI H1, I compelled them to bring it up to that standard in case that's how they chose to use the property or a portion of that property under that zoning classification, and that they would comply with meeting road frontage requirements. So just to make everybody clear on that issue. Again, I think I have addressed the creation of this parcel. I was wrong when I went to the planning commission. I thought this was a portion of a parcel that came from the parcel to the north, which was, has recently been purchased, as you know, by Coastal Precast Concrete. I thought it was part of that parcel. I was completely wrong. And I went back and did the research back when I used to work for the Northampton County Board of Supervisors and oversaw the distribution of the STIP property, which is most of the south area here in the harbor. And I traced it from that point forward, when the county sold the former Sustainable Technologies Industrial Park, or STIP, to the Baldwins and their LLCs. I traced it forward from there to see how that parcel or parcels got divvied up, and I think provided that map, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you didn't understand the map. But I'm really confident it's a parcel that was carved off from the DCR parcel that was sold. They carved off a portion of that and retained it for their LLC to keep ownership of it, and they sold the rest of that lot to DCR, and that's where we are today. And again, when they came forward looking to confirm that plat and subdivision, that's when I made them bring it into conformance with your ordinance requirements of a plat creation. And the road frontage is one of those elements that they had to address. And they did that in 2021, which then brought us to this split zoning issue, because they had only one place to pull it from, which was the large tract to the right of them, or on my map to the right, over here. And that was GBI H1. That's what brought that element of zoning into that parcel. Otherwise, it was pulling harbor from the DCR lot. So that's all I have for you is additional information beyond that from the planning commission public hearing. They did recommend this rezoning application, and they did request that a plan be provided, and the applicant has provided us a conceptual plan for the use of this property. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the application as requested and rezone TM number 90-a-1a6 from GBI H1 and Harbor, only having harbor zoning on the full parcel.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, all right. We're dealing with this right now on Madison Avenue with commercial and residential. And I'm going to read something from August 19th, 2021 council meeting that was supplied from the Baldwin Group. While the harbor zoning classification has proven successful on the north side of the harbor, the south side is not recognized with such traction in the last decade. The heart of this success relies approximately on the proximity to the downtown Cape Charles retail traffic, which promotes, no such environment exists in the industrial park vicinity. So why would we put residential in that little sliver right next to industrial and an open space that will never be developed? There's no residential there now.
Is he proposing residential?
Yeah, that's the first thing she said.
Can you answer her? Katie?
I think the applicant is here, if you'd like to hear from him directly.
Sure. She clearly said residential.
I don't even know where to start now. First of all, we had a contract on this property with a really great user, and through really unfortunate circumstances, he's walked away. There's one councilman who's very aware of it, and that's Steve Bennett. We have another person who's very interested, not exactly the same use, but they too are probably one of the greatest resort companies on the Del Marva Peninsula. And they have not only emailed us, but also copied Councilman Bennett, that they can't come here if everything's kind of fuzzy, wuzzy and gray.
I mean, what's the purpose of it? I mean, do you need residential in there?
It wasn't residential.
Then why can't you do it as industrial?
Well, why can't it be exactly what the majority of it was?
Because most of those uses are already in the industrial setup, the light industrial.
So let me ask you something. If you were the original guy, and you wanted to have not just golf cart, if you wanted to have kayaks, paddleboards, bicycle, bicycle rental, and work with the resort that's to the south, and work with the town, and you wanted to have a building that people could camp out in, because that's allowed in Harbor District, you can't do that in light industrial. And as we know, the whole country's relooking at short-term rentals right now and how that affects things. There's nobody knows more than us what Harbor District could do and couldn't do. And so, and so, there have been times since 2006 that we asked to come to the table and talk about this zoning. And now, and now all of a sudden, it was, it was no problem, until Mr. Grossman brought it up today.
No, I'm just referring back to what you wrote two years ago.
What, because the zoning back then wouldn't work with us?
Because you couldn't, yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't sell it to Coastal Precast unless it was changed to meet your needs.
We sold nothing to Coastal Precast.
You sold them 80 acres.
But none of that was Harbor District, Andy.
I know, it was changed over to industrial, light industrial.
None of that started out as Harbor District. We asked for it not to be changed up.
We also changed three parcels in there over to from Harbor District.
That wasn't our choice, that was your choice.
Exactly.
That was your choice.
Because we didn't want them landlocked in the middle of industrial.
Okay, so all of a sudden, there's a chance to have a nice, normal segue, an opportunity to the harbor, and you, you know, I...
What I'm getting at is, why is there a need for residential in there when all this other stuff?
Then take the residential out of it and say they can still let somebody camp out in a building as a hotel. I mean, this is part of the problems that's been around Cape Charles for years, and I'm going to ask you to be authentic to what's been going on. You can't just all of a sudden...
I am being authentic, because we changed it specifically not to have it interlocked in the industrial area.
Then why didn't you change the, our Harbor District then? Why do you wait till tonight?
What do you mean?
We have a 1.7-acre lot, 1.4 acre...
We did, in that meeting, we changed all that over.
But not the 1.7 acres, you didn't.
Because you guys gifted, whatever it was, 10 acres, 8 acres, to Department of whatever it was.
No, we, we sold it and we kept all that Harbor District zoning too.
But you're never going to build on it.
On that one, what they said.
Correct. So we're going to have one acre in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of industrial, you're going to put one acre of property with potential housing in there.
So the process so far has been this. I have to come to you to ask you for permission to see if I can change something. And then I have to go to a planning council, and then I got to come to you, and then I still may have to go back again and ask for a zoning clearance. Why didn't you bring this up when I asked for permission to change this?
It just got to us.
No, it didn't.
This is the, other than the last, last meeting, this is the first time it's come to council.
That is not. I had to come to you to ask for permission to change the zoning. I paid all my money to ask you for permission to change the zoning.
No, to go through the process of doing it.
Why, then why didn't you stop it then, instead of seeing a taxpayer go through this? Why would you...
Because there was no information given to us what you were planning to do with it.
It was very clear, Andy. I wanted to take 1.4 acres and make it, add three tenths to Harbor District. You're not going to judge me for what I'm actually doing it on you.
Don't judge me about anything. Don't twist the words.
I'm not twisting it, Andy. I'm asking for a zoning, and I, and I think the people who want to do business in this town are asking for authentic...
I just don't think it fits in that general area to have harbor landlocked in the middle of industrial and a no-use area. Makes no sense.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
That's just my opinion. I'm only one of four.
I'm sorry you feel that way, and I'm sorry you waited till tonight to bring it to me.
No, but I'm going back through all the other stuff we just went through, changing all the other stuff two years ago.
I wasn't a part of the process.
Yeah, you were.
Andy!
You were part of that other process with Coastal Precast.
Of the acreage, where they wanted the height?
You specifically wanted to convert right here. You really wanted to change all those parcels over there that we ended up to the GBI... You really wanted to change all those parcels over there that we ended up to the GBH or GBI H1.
Then why didn't I want to change up what we had always planned with everybody else and, and Bay Shore to keep, why didn't I change it all then? Right? Why would I have kept the 1.7 Harbor District? You know what?
But just looking at this piece, just to dive in here, because I wasn't part of it back before whenever it was zoned the first time.
Let it be as it is because what she just said is it complies now to be, to be able to drive on and off as it is right now, right?
Yeah, but based on our future use.
Right? Somebody drive on there right now, right?
But to the left right now, it is already Harbor, correct?
The majority of it is.
And to the right, it's zoned GB1 H1.
So as, as I mentioned in the staff report, you could take one of three actions. You could approve it as requested, you could deny it as requested. If you deny it, it still would retain the bulk of that parcel being Harbor and a sliver of it being zoned GBI H1. It would stay in a split zoning category.
But there's no building allowed in that area because it's-
That's not true.
So, so, so-
That's not true.
Yes, it is. The details you donated to those people, the Virginia Department of Conservation is not going to allow anybody to build in that-
No, I think-
Or no, on my, on my area, the 1.7, there's allowed to build.
I'm talking about the conservation area.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm-
That's what the property you're calling Harbor.
No, it's funny.
That's what the conservation, even though it's called Harbor now, they can never-
This is already zoned Harbor, correct?
Yeah, but it's not buildable. It's a conservation piece.
No, 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 no. Okay, so, let me, let me try to jump in here.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm a little lost in this, to be totally honest with you.
The Harbor, the Harbor piece that has been, been sold and is in conservation, yes, that's, that's zoned Harbor.
To the left of what we're looking at, what's in the red.
And we eventually need to clean that up, okay? That's not what we're talking about tonight.
Correct. We're talking about the little sliver.
We're talking about the property owned by the applicant. The majority of it is already zoned Harbor. So if you vote this down tonight, he can still do whatever he wants on the part that's zoned Harbor within Harbor. He just wants to have the zoning be consistent throughout the whole lot. So, so while, while, while I might agree that based on our, our land use plan and our comp plan and our other actions, it probably would make more sense for that entire lot to be light industrial because that's what the rest of it is. But either way, I think it's in, it's in everyone's best interest for it to be continuous zoning. So, so if the majority of it is Harbor, and that's what the applicant's asking for, I would tend to support that because, because he can still do anything that's in a Harbor District now. He just can't do it on that little sliver off, off to the side.
Which is three tenths of a acre.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I mean, and again, in ideals, in an ideal world, I wish he would have requested that it all be light industrial, so it would all be the same. But if you, if you vote this down, he's still going to be able to do anything, anything you want, anything that is available.
Mr. Hosey, I, I would have saved a lot of problems and a lot of embarrassment for the town because of the person who did back out if we'd had this conversation at the Planning Commission and not here. I mean, because I probably would have approached it differently. At the Planning Commission, Mr. Grossman was not opposed to it, but on record, he said, "But I'm going to throw a hook at it." Why would he put a hook on one more person? And then he said he wanted to make sure that the applicant put in a permit application in, in a certain period of time. But none of this came up then.
Yeah, agree. Fair enough, but, but in Mr. Grossman's defense, he, he didn't have the plan either. I mean, he, they didn't-
He has a conceptual plan, he filed in six months.
Right, right. The approval was based on, on receiving a conceptual plan.
And I handed it to Katie that night.
Right, but the commission didn't have that at the time they made their decision. So, so that, that's new information to the council. So, so that's the first time it's really-
Yeah, so.
Anyway, I, I just wanted to be clear that, that majority of this parcel is Harbor, and by voting this down, it stays Harbor.
The majority.
The majority.
The majority.
All right, so we're only talking about a little-
Voting, yes, just cleans it up. It cleans up, it's the whole thing, Harbor.
It, it actually, God, I'm going to get shot for saying this. It's actually going to be a bigger headache to you than it is to the person who wants to buy it down the road to be, keep it split.
That'll be for another meeting.
Sadly, something incredibly-
If I, if I may just-
Yes.
For clarity's sake, to address Mr. Buckholz's concerns, for any housing consideration, whether it be hotel, motel, short-term dwelling, accessory dwelling units, any of that nature, must come through a conditional use permit process. It is not a by right use in Harbor, just so you're aware of that.
You'll get another shot at it, right?
Thank you.
All right, so I move for adoption of ordinance 2023-1116B, amending Cape Charles zoning tax, tax map parcel 90A-1A6 from general business, light industrial, GB1 H1 and Harbor to Harbor only as noticed and forego reading of the ordinance and a roll call vote, please. Bennett?
Yes.
Buckholz?
No.
Buda?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
All right. Let it be known it's a three to one. The motion passes.
Sales. He needs four. You need, you need all four of you to, you need-
Oh, so do I have to vote or I still can't vote?
No, no. You have, you have a quorum of four, but, but four is the minimum needed to pass any, any, anything. So you, all four of you need to vote and affirm it for this to pass.
I, we did vote.
Yeah, but he's saying we need all four.
We have to vote favorably.
Yes, all, all four of you would have to vote for it to, to make it for it to pass. It's, it's a-
Just because we have a quorum of four doesn't mean we-
It's not the majority of who's present. It's the majority of the council.
Okay, well, this is new.
It's not new.
No, 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 I mean, new for me. It's the first time it's happened on, on my watch. So the motion does not carry because we have three to one and we need four votes. So does it go to?
It just dies. It's, it's-
All right. Moving on. Community Trail Phase Three Lighting.
Okay, so as you may recall, this has been a very long process. And as part of the, the effort to control some of the costs, we, we split some of the, some of the work out to try to handle it ourselves. One of the things that we, that we split out was the lighting. The base bid included putting in all of the foundations, conduit wiring, all of that. But, but actually buying and installing the poles, which would have been about, you know, in the $80,000 range in the bid, we pulled that out and we're going to do that ourselves. By doing it that way, we can accomplish it for about $30,000 less. However, when we did that, the, the, when we built the budget for it, the, there's not a separate line item for that. So there, there was no, no separate project put up for just doing the lights. So what we need to do is, is fund that particular part. And so what I'm, what I'm asking to do is to, to create a second, another line item that's specific to Peach Street Lighting and to, and to transfer $50,000 into that line item to, to fund this project and then approve the contract for the actual award of the lights to Spring City Electrical Manufacturing. I did, I did have, had a mistake in my, in the agenda statement when I wrote it. I, I looked at a, at a budget summary when I, when I put this together that had a contingent, had the CIP contingency at, at over $60,000. So I, I suggested moving 50 of it out. I since found out that that's not the case, we actually only have $41,000 in that contingency at the moment. So what I would like to do is move 40,000 from the contingency and take 10,000 from the municipal building project to make a total of 50 to fund this project. And then we will true both of those up at mid-year and, and create, create those accounts to be whole again. That's the mechanics of the, of the contract award and the funding. There was an, the issue has, issue has come up and been raised about the, the number of lighting that's in the project. And I just want to be clear, this is not something that staff is recommending. Staff has nothing to do with this design. Okay, this, this, this was designed by architects, engineers, and DOT planners. The original design that was approved in, in 2019, before I got here, I agree, was excessive. I've laid out the, the plans tonight to show you. It was 10 poles and 14 lights, and you can see how they were distributed through there. It, it did seem excessive. And as you know, we put this out to bid back then, and bids came in way too high, and we did not award. So we went back and redesigned the project to cut it back. And as part of that effort, we reduced the, the lighting plan to the minimum levels acceptable by DOT regulations. So it is now only seven poles with 10 lights, which is comparable to the, the project on the north side. So North Peach, in the exact same Community Trail project, we have eight poles and eight lights. So it's, it's not dissimilar. There, there are two more lights on this block than on the block north. The reasons for that are two, twofold. One, this is a commercial district where North Peach is residential. But also, there's parking designated in the center of this, of this roadway. That's not the case in North Peach. And additional lighting was needed to meet VDOT specs. So this is the, this is the minimum, this is the minimum amount of lighting the project can take. Reducing the lighting at this point would put the project in serious jeopardy. VDOT would likely stop the project, we'd have to go back for reevaluation, we would likely lose funding, and we'd push this into the, into construction into the tourist system. This is, reducing the number of lights is not an option unless you want to kill the project. So my, my suggestion is go forward with it with this reduced amount, and if it proves to be too much lighting, we could do options then. We can look at maybe trying different fixtures, different wattage, reducing, we can try to take, take action then to, to address any issues if it actually becomes a problem. But I, I don't think that the current design is, is unreasonable. I believe, I think the prior design probably was. But this one is, is very similar to what we have in the other parts of the project. So I recommend approval.
Make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the sole source determination, the budget transfers that we noted, and award the contract to Spring City Electrical Manufacturing Company.
And again, it takes all four to make this happen.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm really disappointed in that we talked about this at the July meeting, and we had a lot of residents present at that meeting that expressed concerns over the amount of lighting that we were doing. And I left that meeting, they left that meeting with the understanding that that was, that we were going to have control because we were going to be paying the budget part of that. I don't know if anybody else kind of remembers that. And I felt pretty confident that we were moving forward and that no decisions were going to be made on the amount of lighting until we had that input. So when I looked at this tonight and I looked back to what we did really in 2022, which, John, thank you for providing that, that summary, that's exactly what it was when we looked at it in July of this year. There's no reduction at all in the lighting. I certainly don't want to kill the project, but I feel like this is a little bit of a bait and switch kind of a feel, and I, I just don't, I don't feel good about that. You know, I, I understand that this is VDOT approved. Are there any possibilities that we can look at? Like, why does it have to be double light, lights in the center? Can those at least be single? You know, I mean, there's just, I, I feel, I feel we walked away from that meeting saying to our residents, "We hear you, and we are going to have the ability to control that." Was I the only one that misunderstood that? I don't know if anybody else-
No, I, I thought that as well.
I know Mr. Grossman thinks that because he has talked about it as well. I just don't know how we, we missed that ability to make those changes.
Has this concept been approved by VDOT?
Yes.
Is this what was bid by the contractor? 10 lights or did the contractor bid?
Well, we pulled the lights out, but the contractor did bid the installation of 10 lights. So they're, they're currently installing the, the, all the-
I think where things get missed is that there's lots of things that were built in this town over the years that are not up to current code. And light level is one of the things that gets looked at a lot. And I know we've got lots of places that don't meet current code lighting levels. And if this is approved by VDOT as the minimum required to meet code light levels, and that's what I heard you say, it has been, then I think, you know, unfortunately, that's what it is if we want the project. If, I don't even want to talk about changing lights after the fact, but this, this is a minimum code requirement, and that's, that's what you designed to.
And it's already been reduced from 10 to 7, from the 19 to the 22.
Yeah, but that was just designed, the first one was just, you know, it's kind of like landscaping. Let's throw in as many as we can. We don't really need-
No, that first one was a, was a final approved design that went out to bid.
Yeah.
That would have been built had, had the bids not been, been-
Ridiculous.
Ridic, you know, too high.
Any other discussion?
I just feel we're, I, I, the position we're put in is just bad.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't want to kill the project. It may be, we may perceive it to be overkill, but if that's what the, the VDOT requirements are, then I don't see where we have a choice than to meet the requirements.
I just, I, I wonder if we're using that term VDOT requirement. You know, this is VDOT approved. I, I don't know. When we've been talking about it before, when we talked about it in July, when we talked about it last year, the term, "This is what VDOT requires," was never heard. That's the first time I've heard it, is tonight. And if that was the case in July, then that's what should have been told to us in July. This is a VDOT requirement, we will not be able to change this. We'll have to figure out how we're paying for it. That's a different story than, like, this is the first time we're hearing VDOT requirement. I hate, hate, hate being pushed to the wall on something because we have a flipping sidewalk dug up on an entire block out there. It's just, you know, all along this project, from the very, very, very beginning, it goes long before these discussions, it's been handled dishonestly.
I don't know if dishonest is a, is a right word.
Steve, we sat in here in a giant meeting-
I don't know that anybody knows how bright it's going to be, quite frankly.
No, we don't, but I, I think we can have a-
Unless you're lighting it.
We can have a pretty good idea of what those, what that additional sensor is going to bring.
There's, there's, there's actually detailed engineering drawings of the light levels and where they are. And this, this is not something that was done in a vacuum.
No, it wasn't done in a vacuum, but all along, as these, these issues started back at the very, very, very first meeting, and all along, people were placated, our residents, with answers of, "Oh, this won't be a problem, we'll take care of it then." It was always kind of a, "Let's push it back, let's push it back." And there, we've had many responses to some of those resident needs, which is why we're not doing the middle part of Peach and having eight-foot sidewalks and taking down all those beautiful median trees in the beginning. So there has been things that have been listened to. But I, I, I think it's really unfortunate the way, I think, somebody should have said in August, I mean, in July, when I think, July or August when we met, nothing's going to change about the amount of lights because this is what VDOT requires. But we left that meeting thinking something was going to change.
Can we at least investigate whether the, the lights in the median on the north side could be at lower levels because that's the closest to, the, the other ones are a reasonable distance from the residential area?
Right.
But if, if that double pole could, if we can investigate decreasing the, the lumens there, that might at least give some, some relief.
Again, that's why, was my suggestion is that let's, let's get them in and see what it is first. And then if we need to reduce the lighting levels, if we can reduce the wattage of the bulbs or whatever, I mean, I don't think that would be difficult to do. But let, but we don't even, you said it a moment ago. We, we don't, we, we just think we know what this lighting is going to be. So let's, let's see it. Let's give, let's give the engineers the benefit of the doubt that they know what they're doing. And then let's go in and modify them if we- doubt that they know what they're doing. And then let's go in and modify them if we need to.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Can I abstain?
No, I need four.
This is four as well, for verbal?
Everything's four.
Yeah, that's a lot of money down the tubes right away if we don't pass this.
All opposed?
No, I'll vote in favor just because I feel like we're being pushed to the wall and where we're at, very unhappily. And I really need a commitment that we're going to look at that. It's, this was not handled well.
Noted in the record.
So did they hand the documents?
They did. What is this? All right. Town Council meeting, time change resolution. One that hopefully we can get through.
Oh, no. You need four votes on this, too.
So we've discussed this in prior meetings to go back to the way we used to do things and to better align ourselves with the planning commission and get all of us home a half hour early. We decided we would change our meetings from six o'clock instead of six thirty, however that requires a resolution from council to do. So I recommend approval.
Can I get a motion, please?
Do I move?
Are we recommending adoption of resolution?
Oh, you want me to read that one?
Yes, please.
Or I will if you get seconded.
I'll second it.
All right. So I move for adoption of resolution 2023-1116B, changing the time of Cape Charles Town Council regular meetings, as noted, and forego the reading of the resolution.
Any discussion?
All right, roll call vote. Bennett?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Luda?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
All right, four yeses. That has been moved. All right, USDA Rural Development Grant loan for the police car.
This is a, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. It's exactly what it sounds like. USDA Rural Development Grant in the amount of $15,050 and loan in the amount of $27,950. This project has already been approved by council. These amounts are already in the current fiscal year budget. This is just a resolution that USDA Rural Development needs council to adopt before we can move forwards with the loan application process.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
We're really missing Paul tonight and his reading of the resolutions.
I move for adoption of resolution 2023-116C of the governing body of the town of Cape Charles, as noted, and forego the reading of the resolution. Any other discussion on this?
I will note that you missed one of the ones. It's 2023-1116.
Thank you. They're all running together. All right, roll call vote. We'll start at the bottom. Holloway?
Got me. Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
All right, motion has passed. All right, Mr. Hosey?
All right, I need to get caught up on some reporting on new hires. We, I was out of state in September. We didn't have a quorum in October, so I just wanted to bring up to speed on some of the hires over the past couple of months. I think I might have mentioned this in July, but I'll mention this again. In July, Meadow Nunan was hired at the water plant as a water plant operator. In August, Akeem Agerson was appointed, was a public works maintenance specialist. In October, we had Ryan Silve come in as our finance clerk, currently working with Kathy. And in November, Jordan Yee is our new police officer. So he's, so now you approved two new spots. We finally have got the second one filled now.
Great.
Is he already certified? Is he up to the academy?
No, both, both of the new officers will be going to the academy in January.
Great.
For separations, I think you know this, but, so in August, John Lockwood retired out of Public Works. In September, Deborah Pocock retired, finance department's treasurer. And in November, Bob James has resigned. He's our part-time compliance officer. So I also just wanted to let you know, I got a call from Eastern Chamber. They are, they want to move their Chamber Fest to Cape Charles next year. It's typically in Nantucket. They're looking at May 18th. They've already worked with Canoni to use the Canoni property near the shanty. And, but also that same weekend, I was contacted by our local Rotary Club. It's their 100th anniversary. It's the oldest club on the shore. And so they want to do something with that, but they're going to do something in the park. So on the 18th as well. So I don't think that these things, I think they could complement each other if they both know what's going on. It could be for an interesting weekend. In May, we don't have a lot going on. You know, we've got the Love Fest and Blessing of the Fleet in April, and then really not much in May. So I think it fills in May nicely.
John, if I could add, Rotary was considering, I think in the park, was going to be an art show, so.
Yes, and I think they wanted to do a golf cart parade or two or something.
The Chamber usually does sort of like a scorpions or a rock band.
And they do it normally like three to eight or something like that in the past.
Completely two different crowds.
Right. Also, I wanted to give you an update on the EV charging stations. The hangup for a while was just getting all, getting all the equipment in the parks. Everything is, everything is here. Everything, they have everything, but for us, well, it's the pilot program of Shinkatig and Nantucket in here. The Shinkatig and Nantucket ones were just installed, and the crews are expected to energize those chargers this week. So ours is still waiting on the Canoni lease. So as you recall, we've agreed to allow two parking spots in our gravel lot. But the actual charger, the pole and the charger is going to be just outside our lot in Canoni Land. So they needed a little lease for that. So they're working through the final details of that. They hope to have that lease figured out within a week. And then installation should be very shortly after that.
How far is the run for power?
It's long. That's actually why we chose it. It's right there.
Yeah, it's right across our parking lot, right by the hand building.
And once they put their credit card in, the cord actually comes down, and then it's got a long thing to get to the, yeah, it's a pretty neat system.
Our beach, our full beach is back open again. So if you haven't gone out to take a look, the northern part of the beach looks really good. We were, you know, we were hoping for a little further south, but what we got is a really good upgrade. And so I wanted to thank the public for their patience over the past few months. And also, you know, it's an unavoidable part of dredging. A lot of stuff gets turned up and brought up with it. And so there was a little extra debris around the beach and the public, you know, just wanted to go up and walk, you know, help pick all that up. And so it stayed pretty nice. It's a nice beach now.
It seems that that's still happening, the excess. So do we have, is public, do we have anyone on our team that's going through? I know the public is helping a lot in their morning walks, but the amount of stuff that they're getting each day is pretty significant.
I've walked it myself and have not seen very much. So, no, we haven't started, we haven't done anything as far as like dragging the beach or anything.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I just, I mean, I've seen three pictures within the last week of, you know, piles about this big of all kinds of stuff that's there. I just, I don't want, I mean, I think it's great and our citizens will continue to do that, but I just want to make sure we also are giving it a run, you know, and looking as well in the morning. I don't, I just, Julie knows a little bit more about it. She and I have kind of talked a little bit about it, but.
I'll have them take a look, have them take a look. I did, I didn't think it was going to, now that the dredging is over, I didn't think it was an ongoing issue.
Oh, yeah. I mean, this was up until yesterday.
Now, you will, the beach, the full beach is open, but you will start seeing sand fence and other things going up so we can help keep all that nice new sand on the north there throughout the winter. So just because you see sand fence going up doesn't mean the beach is closed or anything. It's just we're doing our normal winter mitigation. Also, just FYI, we had originally scheduled an executive session for this evening for Canoni to give us an update on their situation at their request. It was postponed until December. And the last thing I need to bring you up to speed on is on the library sale, we had brought to you a concept, you know, you still need to approve formal documents on that, but we brought you a concept of selling the library building into two Randolph lots. We're going to rezone those lots to residential, buy back the library portion. The original deal, the original global deal was basically for $600,000 for the library building, $325 for each of the lots, which brought the global offer up to 1.25 million. The buyback of our part of the library was 450,000, which would have netted us about 800,000. The developer has now changed his mind and penciled it out and is, does not want to include the Randolph lots as part of the deal, meaning that everything else will remain the same, but those two lots wouldn't be part of the sale. And the town would put those, we would put those out ourselves for bid. So that, under that scenario, we would still get the 600,000 for the building. The buyback is still 450, which would net us 150, plus whatever we would get for the lots. So I would, I probably would put a minimum bid on those lots of, you know, 300,000 or 325.
Same as we did the other one.
So, well, actually a little more than the other one because I think this is a more favorable location.
Absolutely.
So at the end of the day, financially, we will wind up about the same place, but it means more work for us, having to coordinate doing that. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any significant objection to carving those two lots off. They're still going through the process now of rezoning, and we won't put them out until they're rezoned to our one. But other than that, we'll move forward with the library sale and buyback. As I mentioned to you before, the renovation of just our part of the library, the HVAC, the maintenance, the work we had to do, the bids came in way too high. So we're working with the developer to roll our work into his work. So when I say we would net 150, we'd net 150 less, our work that needs to be done. So we may come close to breaking even, but we'll still get the money from the lots of, on the Randolph lots when we sell them. So anyway, if, I just want to make sure that there was no serious objection to that.
Not an objection, just a question. Would we require both lots be, could they be split and two different people buying?
Yes, we would, we would put it out separately, yes. I would probably put a higher minimum bid on the corner lot.
Mm-hmm.
If there's no other questions, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any comments this evening?
I have a couple, kind of calling us out a little bit, but beginning of September, I and some others attended the VML conference, which I find highly useful. And I also have attended the last few years the mayor's conference, so I'm going to call you out specifically and ask you to attend the mayor's conference next year.
I certainly will.
It is an invaluable chance to network with mayors from all over the state. You learn a tremendous amount about what's going on, what they're doing, how they solve problems that we have. So it's just a super opportunity for networking that you especially need to do because the mayor's conference is much smaller than the VML, which is all council and mayors. Yeah, but they're both run concurrently, generally the mayor's council, mayor's conference first and VML. So, and Ken, I would encourage you to go to the VML conference next year as well.
It's in Virginia Beach.
Yeah, it's in Virginia Beach next year, so it's well worth it. The other thing is Cape Charles Rosenwald School Initiative, they just had their annual meeting a couple weeks ago, Saturday. They invited quite a few people, and a number of council people replied that they would attend. I unfortunately was not able to go, but as it turns out, no one from council showed up. And they wanted to thank us publicly for all we've done for the Cape Charles Rosenwald School Initiative. And it was a little embarrassing when they asked for someone from council to thank and there was no one there. So that's on us, and I think we need to do a better job of that in the future.
Steve and I talked about it a little bit on that. Just if we get an invite like that, if we just let Libby know or let John know, you know, I can attend or I can't attend so that we know that we're covered.
Yeah, and if we do go, I mean, if we say we're going, we need to go.
You go, right.
I have the same thing happen with the school board.
Yeah.
I have to run up there and make out of work.
Yeah.
Mr. Buckles?
Yeah. How's the Peach Street? Is, are we on the signage? Are we good with the, some people know that the place is open down there.
So I met, yes, I met with, with Bob and with Karen on that. It is, it's confusing. The contract requires that the contractor leave access to those businesses. And I went down and looked at it myself. And, and they did. There was, so like if you're, if you're on the Randolph looking south, there's this nice gravel path. But right next to that path is a sign that says sidewalk closed and an arrow this way. No reasonable person would have thought that they could go down there. And then it's worse going south, going north. If you're on Mason, there's nothing there. You have to go on to Peach Street Books property and then go in.
And hook around.
And so, yes, it's a problem. VDOT being VDOT, they overkill with everything, including signage. So we're working with Main Street to provide some additional signage with arrows to show that it says they're open and this is how you get there. And so if that's a construction moves, you know, we can move, I don't mean anything hard, like sandwich boards or something, something we can move that keeps it open. The good news is that the east sidewalk is scheduled to be one of the first things completed. So even when the rest of the project is still being done, that, hopefully, you know, that east sidewalk would be done earlier on in the project. So probably not till after Festive Fridays, but.
But have we had conversations with them about actually working on a Friday, like ending, you know, before four o'clock, like in that area or 4:30 when Festive Fridays?
You mean contractors?
Yeah. But in, just to communicate.
No, we haven't had that conversation yet.
Could we have that conversation so that, like, I mean, they may, it may be a moot point in the sense of, they may stop it for, I don't know. But, you know, that is going to be, I mean, if you think about last year, that street and was heavily, heavily trafficked. I know that AJ's and Salt and Sand have taken a hit on, you know, 50% on numbers. So for those listening out there in TV land or Facebook land, please go and support them. But for Festive Fridays in particular, my biggest concern is not just, is not just signage, is lighting. Because you can't see how to go to that direction. Ironic that I'm talking about lighting.
It is ironic, isn't it?
Could we get six damn lights up there?
Well, you could get ten. I think we should be able to request for those construction lights.
Yeah, something's got to.
The temporary ones.
All right. Just to finish on how that all transpired, just so everybody knows about a sense of community. I got a call from a competitor of both Salt and Sand and was concerned about, you know, their wellbeing based on, you know, the mist, the signage was just terrible. So I threw together a little chat group and a bunch of us started brainstorming, and that's where a lot of this activity came from, for you. So we didn't want to go step on anybody's toes, but there was a lot of similar businesses making sure everybody was taken care of. So that, when I talk about a sense of community, that's what you got right there. Other businesses looking out for other businesses, so. And they know who they are. They don't really need to be called out.
As we speak about requests from other businesses, we had a Main Street Connect meeting about a week ago, and one of the big concerns from merchants is lack of restroom facilities in the core district there, especially since we have to postpone our construction of the visitor's center bathroom facility. We have a substantial grant that's going to run out. And doing some quick research, we can purchase for about the value of that grant, sort of an industrial, high-capacity restroom that could be eventually, once that's built, moved down to the beach and provide facility. facilities there for a while. So I really would like to see us look seriously at getting something that we can have in place fairly quickly, and really provide restroom facilities for residents and visitors and, you know, and folks, so.
Ken, we had a meeting today, just kind of impromptu, that had Board of Supervisors Chairman Coker there, and John Hosey and Karen at Main Street, and we also think that that's the direction to go. So Karen's begun some research, so if you could share what you found with her, it was all as a result of that meeting last week. In that ARPA money runs out, we have to designate what we're going to use it for by the end of December. It was supposed to be used to afford this bathroom, and it has to be spent by June thirty of twenty-four. And I think the county would support us with additional funding if needed with that, but so everybody's thinking, I think, the same direction. It's got to be something that will, is substantial enough to work, not another silver bullet.
I'd appreciate the preserve, too, to find out where they got their, that's an industrial.
Yeah, it's got, the main thing is capacity, like, how much use it can take on a regular basis, not an event, which is what we ended up getting with the silver bullet, it's really an event bathroom. So, thank you for bringing that up.
All right, to close it out, I'd like to thank, oh, sorry.
I know, I've talked a lot already.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
I didn't really, I just took nobody else's turn. I wanted to congratulate you on bringing Dock Dogs to us and being persevering and getting that here, and Julie and the towns help in making that happen. It was great to see Public Works out there just working so hard, but it was just a really great event. If you didn't get out there to see it, you really missed it, I hope that we can do it again. It's, all of my doubts, kind of, as it being my backyard, were put to rest very, very quickly. So I think it was really a great shoulder season event as well. And I just had the opportunity this past week, for different reasons, some good, some bad, to interact with Ralph from Public Works, who's our new lead for that area, and what a tremendous guy. If you have not met him, he has been with the team for a while, but he's doing such an exceptional job as a leader, and I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate that. He's, we had some tenuous situations that we were working through, and he handled them really well, very professional, and I saw him at Dock Dogs, and he just manages his team exceptionally well, so I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate him.
Appreciate that.
All right, so now, after Councilwoman Holloway just stole my thunder with what I was going to say.
I just wanted you to have kudos, because you work so hard.
But Julie, thank you so much. Yes, I was absolutely thrilled with the way it went for the first year, not being back here for nine years. It was very exciting with Dock Dogs, and if you did miss it, please put it on your calendar for next year, once we get the date settled. And again, thank you to town staff, Ralph was phenomenal, he was there at the beginning to set it up, stayed to break it down, it actually turned out perfect, the park looks fantastic, took the water, we got the fire department involved, thank them very much for what they did. And then just a few announcements here, November twenty-second, town offices closing at noon for Thanksgiving holiday, twenty-third and twenty-fourth offices will be closed, November thirtieth, town council work session, December seventh, town council work session tentative.
Do we know how tentative that is? Because I can't meet.
It's very tentative, I've got nothing scheduled for that.
Because I will not be able to.
The thirtieth?
Did we schedule our executive session yet for?
For Kenone, at the regular meeting, that'll be at the regular meeting.
Oh, we will.
It'll be following the regular meeting. The November thirtieth is for mid-year budget review and to review the annual citizen survey questions.
Okay, and then the next town council regular meeting will be December twenty-first. So can I get a motion for?
So move.
Any discussion?
No.
Ho, ho, ho.